We will call this meeting of Bucks County Commissioners December 18th, 21th of order. We will begin with the pledge and leading us in the pledge is our Director of Operations, Madison George Wilson.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will begin with our employee recognition awards. And from the list that I have here, my understanding is that there is only one employee who was able to make it, but I'd like to state the other employees' names. First is Bo David Burris from the Department of Corrections. These are all 20 years, by the way. The next is Sean A. Ryan from Health Services in Ashamoney Manor. Gregory Williams, Jr. from the Department of Corrections. But here with us today, we're happy to say, for 20 years of services, is Monica Rousseau from Adult Probation. Next, we have our Seven Seals Award, and we're happy that Matt Allen is able to be with us today. He is our Director of Veterans Affairs. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner C O O and everyone in attendance. When I first started in this position, I had an email come through from the E S G R P A Employer Support of Guard or Reserves. So I clicked on it and applied. And in the 11 years that I've been with the county through the sheriff's office and in this position, I've done various annual training missions and actually even deployed in 2019 and was overseas for a year and a half. And the county has always supported me. So it was a smart decision for me to just submit the county for this award. And we are one of 30 organizations in the state of Pennsylvania to achieve this award. And I have Paul from the state that's here to present the award for the county.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Paul Vazetti. I'm a retired Colonel from the United States Air Force. And I'm here to honor today the county commissioners and thank them for their time and their support to the Department of Defense's Employer Support to Guard and Reserve Program, which is an official DOD program administered at the state level through our committee up at Fort Indian Town Gap. The Seven Seals Award is presented in recognition to those employers who demonstrate leadership, a global understanding and perspective, and an initiative in supporting our men and women who serve in the American Armed Forces, in the National Guard, and the Reserves. As Matt said, you are being recognized today, one of only 30 employers in the state of Pennsylvania who can, that's the maximum limit that we have on the number of awards. So this, it's a fairly prestigious award. You present a first-class image of what it means to support our servicemen and women in the Guard and Reserve today. And this has set you ahead of the other 66 counties within the Commonwealth. In nominating the county, Chief Allen wanted to recognize you for your explanatory support you have made to the citizen soldiers and the difference you're making in his life. So that's very important. And the reason why life is so important and work-life balance amongst the Guardsmen and the Reserves is because they have three bosses or three managers that they have to bounce back and forth. You have your work, your family, and of course, the military. And it's really a balancing act. And over a career of 20 years, there's times that you have to, you know, focus on family. There's times you have to focus on your day-to-day full-time job, and there's times you focus on your Reserve or Guard job. And it's important to get that support from all three players. And that's why we're recognizing the county today. The other thing is, from a national perspective, you need to realize that you're making a critical difference to the overall programs within the Department of Defense. active duty since 9/11 can no longer do it by themselves. You know, when I was a kid and my father was a reservist, the thought was we were the backup force, the strategic force for the global war in Europe. When I grew up and deployed underneath the first Gulf War, it was really the first time we started to see the Guard and Reserve participating shoulder to shoulder with the active duty. Today, the force structure is probably two-thirds reservists, one-third active duty. And without your support of Matt, he would not be able to contribute to the national security. So indirectly, you are helping national programs. So that's what's so important about this award.
Well, thank you. We are honored to have it, honored to have Matt as an employee and grateful that you came here for this, too.
Can I come in?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want us to come down? You're good. Do you need us to come down there or are we good? Okay. We got the whole gang here. Before we go to public comment, there is one change in the agenda on number 22. Our Axon Enterprises Incorporated, this is under the Sheriff, approved contract to purchase body worn in car cameras. The date should say 12/31/29, and the amount should say $595,403.60. And the county is at 12%. Everybody got that? Who needs it? We'll begin with public comment, and Fran Haller.
Good morning, Fran Haller, right for Bucks, and I live in Newtown Township. Commissioners Marsaglia and Harvey, you didn't answer the questions I posed to you on November 20th and December 4th. Both times, I asked who counseled you in your attempt to flout the rule of law. Your attempt to subvert the law drew the attention of the Pennsylvania Freedom Caucus and our State House of Representatives. From the website patownhall.com, the December 9th article was titled, "PA Freedom Caucus Introduces Recall Legislation Aimed at Rogue Local Officials." I'm quoting from the article. "Pennsylvania voters shouldn't have to tolerate rogue county officials openly usurping state law to satisfy their own political whims," said Freedom Caucus member and prime sponsor Joe Diorsey. This legislation establishes a process for local voters to decide whether a county or municipal official should be removed from office after an offense like we witnessed in Bucks County. Under this bill, the process to remove county/municipal officials would still originate in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives, much like impeachment proceedings. But upon the House's approval, local voters would ultimately decide the manner in a recall election. Pennsylvania Freedom Caucus Chair Robert Lee Better voiced his support for the initiative. "Pennsylvanians deserve action after tyrants seek to undermine our institutions. At a time when confidence in our election process is waning, the least responsible thing to do as legislators is to turn a blind eye and leave illicit behavior unchecked. The Freedom Caucus is proud to lead the charge to right this wrong," end quote. For those in attendance and for those viewing this meeting via livestream, if you agree that local elected officials that conspired to break the law should be recalled, I encourage you to contact Representative Joe Diorsey, spelled D apostrophe O R S I A, and let him know you support his bill. You should also contact your own state representative urging him or her to support Diorsey's bill.
I own property next door to a food establishment in Bristol Borough, which is out of compliance for requirements governed by the Health Department, which has refused to cure violations despite numerous communications to all levels of the department. The unaddressed violation that affects me the most is the presence of 18 refuse bins that have not been cleaned in over a year, and as it is a seafood establishment, you can imagine the stench. Text of Act 315 states the County Department of Health shall execute the powers and duties vested in it by the laws of the Commonwealth, which include the FDA 2022 Food Code that clearly defines the requirements for the storage of outdoor refuse containers, and these are not being met. Ben Wirick, retail food program specialist at the PA Ag Department, has confirmed it is the duty of the Bucks County Health Department to enforce the food code. He said this facility could either have an indoor trash room or pay for daily pickup. Dr. Damsker is aware of this situation and is refusing to comply with Act 315 and his own department's rules and regulations. The department's food establishment rules and regulations and the FDA food code shall be enforced by the Bucks County Department of Health and shall apply equally to all persons, yet this is not happening. The department is also refusing to hold the owner accountable to her responsibilities as a certified food safety manager, which encompasses following the rules and regulations of the department and the food code. Via the right-to-know process, it has become evident that the department has licensed this business despite a missing owner's signature and incorrect and other missing information on applications. The field inspector has been marking the establishment as in compliance for the physical facility section of the form with the full knowledge of her superiors when this is blatantly false. Does Bucks County want the same reputation as Trenton in terms of allowing false inspection reports? I see your agenda today includes approving the appointment of Phil Smith on the Board of Health. This is deeply concerning, as he stated to me in regards to my situation, it's our fault, and thanks to you, it won't happen again. But the department then gave another license for this business owner that generates yet more trash. Mr. Smith made commitments in a face-to-face meeting that to this day have not been upheld. I respectfully ask that you table the motion to approve his appointment until you have the full set of facts of what has transpired under his directorship. I have emailed the County Chief Operating Officer and Commissioner Alice Marsaglia and their assistants and do not even receive a response. I would like the opportunity to meet with the commissioner to detail the deficits I have discovered at the Health Department. As supervisors of the Health Department, will you commit to doing so?
Just keep making your statement, and then we'll do it later. Thank you. Beth Curcio.
It saddens me that I need to ask the same questions over and over again and go unanswered. I've heard Diane on more than one occasion say, "You don't answer questions to we, the people of Bucks County, even though we, the people of Bucks County, pay your benefits, your generous salary, and much more." I believe the world is in the Great Awakening, and you will soon learn that your Marxist ideology is not what our founding fathers intended, and the people of Bucks County are now rejecting them also. This Marxist ideology all over the world has caused more deaths and devastation to humanity, and you continue to promote it and help the globalists try to enforce it. You just called Vision 2040. The American people, the American people, year after year, have been enslaved by our own government through unconstitutional taxation, regulations on businesses, farms, and Green New Deal crap, along with lots of unnecessary wars. Did you get high, closing schools, main standing masks for children, business close? It really is quite sick when we actually look back and realize how many people complied and believed their government would protect them, and it was all for the greater good. Did it feel good that you helped old people die alone without their families and most probably helped cause some of those deaths? Commissioners, we, the people, have witnessed you gaslight the people, lie many times, and we witness you breaking the law and smirking about it. It's the end of 2024. You still have not released the emails that the judge ordered you to turn over to Jamie Walker. Did either of you pay your $1,500 fines? Why are you above the law? Lawfare at the county level? Is it true that you're using taxpayers' funds to pay three lawyers to sue Jamie and Megan? Do all taxpayers realize they could apply these same tactics on any of us? When you begin to hold town halls and let taxpayers be the voice for where they want their tax dollars spent, you have no respect for the taxpayer, making them sit through employee recognition, poems, et cetera. Government produces nothing. That's why we're in a republic. The people are to have the power, not the government. You commissioners have become more corrupt. If that weren't true, you would gladly hold town halls. Time to go department by department and cut out waste. When employees retire, instead of getting new ones, move people around. Time to get rid of DEI. It's a total waste of money. Now, since you have called us election deniers for years, yet you actually tried to defy the PA Supreme Court, let's cut out the waste here. We know the cheat is in, or we would have won down ballot. Trump was just too big to rig. Time to go to written ballots at the precincts with ID. Just think of the millions you could save the taxpayers. You'd spread the joy. And just...
Ed Mackhouse.
Ed Mackhouse, Buckingham, a former teacher, engineer, scientist. I think that election integrity is very important. We have Hunter Biden being pardoned. We've had the judge who sentenced people to a private prison to make millions of dollars being pardoned. I think we need a government that won't pardon criminals and will support integrity. Paper ballots are traceable. Like a check is traceable. You write out a check, you know it's to a particular person. But computers can be hacked. There is no perfect computer. When there was counting ballots, paper ballots, there was obvious that there was some violation of the law, efforts to manipulate the ballots. But if you just go to save a penny for each paper ballot, just go to full electronic systems, it's easier to push a button and change to get whatever election results you want, like in China, Russia, or Venezuela. So machine ballots could be improved so that they would not be electronic. They would record the totals, and people, when they're voting, they could see what the totals are and how their actual vote affects the ballots, the totals, so that everyone could see what the totals are in each machine and all. We shouldn't have more votes than there are voters. Like in the 2020 election, they criticized Trump for questioning the election, but Biden supposedly got 10 million more votes than Obama got, who actually campaigned, and Harris got. So it's obviously that the reason this election came out right was because Republicans had to check more things. And we had some paper ballots, and they watched the stuff in Philly, like the movie 2000 Mules. So the government itself should take its steps to further election integrity, not to find more ways to steal elections. Like the families should, and the nursing homes should be able to submit the paper ballots. The nurses shouldn't be able to do that. I'd like to know whether in the nursing homes and the senior centers, we have nurses submitting the ballots, which is a conflict of interest. It should be from the family members. So we need election integrity because, like in California and cities, people are struggling because of the corruption from the Democratic Party. Thank you.
Fred Horan.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, public. Past three years, the sheriff's office has started a lot of new initiatives to better serve the people of Bucks County. But I just wanted to read a letter from a 12th grader at Central Bucks West High School regarding, as you know, about 18 months ago, we put our first SRO in the school there. And she writes this. "In the past, I have had many negative encounters with police officers. My earliest memory as a young toddler involved my parents and the police. Throughout my entire life, they told me not to trust the police and would always put negative claims about them in my mind. At the beginning of this year, there was a lot that went on with my parents and family unit as a whole. Deputy Landis has been there since day one, helping me get through these tough times every step of the way. He has done so much for me from the beginning, an active listener to actually taking action. Before Deputy Landis, I had never had any prior positive experiences with law enforcement. I now see that there are good and bad people everywhere, no matter what line of work you are in. Officer Landis has helped me get through tough times in which I don't believe I could have without his help. I know that I am not the only student he has helped in such an impactful way. I cannot thank him enough. Thank you for everything you do." Deputy Landis, thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Porto.
Okay, again, Rochelle Porto, Ben Salem Township, right for Bucks. "The greatest scam in history by John Larrabelle posted in the New American, the coming edition 12/30/2024. He states, 'I distinctly remember learning about climate change in early elementary school in the 1980s. We students were terrified as our teachers informed us about the greenhouse effect and the fact that too much carbon dioxide in the atmosphere would lead to dangerous warming of the earth. What's more, they told us about the even more pressing threat of a hole in the ozone layer running our refrigerators. We were destroying our only protection against dangerous ultraviolet light from the sun. Don't forget acid rain brought on by pollution caused by all the cars we drive.'" While in high school during the 90s, John was taught about this global warming, and it was treated as a fact. During his junior year, his chemistry teacher told him that the class had, told the class that the United States had hit peak oil, and we would run out of oil in the next few decades. John states in 2007 that he heard the late Rush Limbaugh explain to his audience why he didn't believe in global warming and the alleged pending climate catastrophes. He even mocked the 2006 Al Gore prediction that if we don't do something about global warming in the next 10 years, we're toast. So John read more. He found out on the BBC, they quoted climate scientists, that in 2012, the Arctic would be ice-free in the summer. By June of 2012, John was working for the New American as the copy editor, and a few months later, he had been thoroughly deprogrammed of the effects of the climate change propaganda. In 2012, it was the second record, it was a record low for Arctic sea ice. But the ice did not disappear. In fact, by 2013, it had grown by 40% more. And much to Al Gore's chagrin, the world did not end in 2016. The idea that human emissions and carbon dioxide causing catastrophic warming on the earth is arguably the greatest hoax ever perpetrated in human history. It is perhaps the greatest big lie ever promulgated by governments in concert around the earth, around the globe. As the New Americans accurately documents, literally not one disaster predicted by these climate scientists has ever come true, yet the lies and propaganda persist. The globalists at the U N are still holding their climate conferences. They meet in luxurious accommodations, they're flown there by private jets, and this year's COP29 was business as usual. More hysteria, more doom and gloom, and more... More hysteria, more doom and gloom, and more calls for developed countries like the United States to fork over trillions of dollars that will only end up enriching the global elites. It's just a massive worldwide extortion racket. Pay up, or you're all doomed. The whole climate change ideology has become religion for people, and it's taking place of traditional religious systems. The best way to combat this scam is to end it once and for all with the truth. My comments. We call on President Trump and his new cabinet to once again pull us out and stop all things from the UN, stop all agreements and call them what they are, treaties, get the Senate involved to reject them all. We call on the Bucks...
Morning, Commissioners. Couple things. Many of the speakers hit on very excellent points this morning. I'd like to focus in on the three of you a little more. There are roughly 3,143 counties in the United States, plus or minus. So, individual on its own may not be able to affect the national policy, but some county somewhere has got to start using some sense to impact the nation. Maybe the three, or one, or two of you might be able to do it. And I refer again to the gift that keeps on giving, ARPA, many people say the cause of our national debt spiraling out of control. Last month, or last meeting, December 4th, there were 15 items totaling $3.5 million of ARPA money that we used. This time, there's today, 11 items, $2.3 million in two weeks, $5.8 million of ARPA money that we're grabbing. If you look at the, and I looked at the back of the budget, and I noticed that next year there's going to be $31.5 million of ARP money we're not going to get. Perhaps we could start now and be a county to speak out for fiscal responsibility, which gets me to a question on item 18A. I noticed in the Chaminie Manor, spending $7,500 for haircuts. The way I see it, if there's $25 a cut, that's 300 haircuts in the Chaminie Manor for a year. And that, again, that's something you could do about. More than that, you absolutely, and someone ought to speak about this. I refer to the personnel list today. Items nine, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, Human Services Department, Human Resources Department, there are received raises. What is it that the Human Resources have done today as a department that we have $38,000 of raises on today's personnel item? I at least ask a question. Could someone please tell me and the rest of us, taxpayers, what it is that one department does at the end of a year?
Thank you. Did you want to take any of these issues? Go ahead. I'm going to ask Commissioner Harvey to start with some of the answers.
Going backwards here, in terms of Mr. Warren's comments, fiscal responsibility, I think it'll be noted that of the four collar counties, I think we're the only one not doing a tax increase this year, presuming, you know, the board approves the budget that, you know, we have in front of us. And so, you know, certainly, I think it's, I'll take that comparison to some of the counties. No disparagement to the counties, but for this year, you know, we're managing, thank you to the hard work of our staff here to kind of make it through without a tax increase for residents. In terms of haircuts, it's a shame, quite frankly, you know, the Chaminie Manor has, you know, hundreds of residents, you know, who in many ways are in seriously bad health to suggest that they aren't entitled to having somebody come, you know. It's also paid for out of federal grants. It's not actually, you know, taxpayer money in terms of Bucks County. But to pay this gentleman who comes to, you know, comes to the Chaminie Manor and provides haircuts for residents, you know, weekly, probably, so, you know, I think that's something that, you know, I certainly have no issue paying for people to get personal hygiene. Personnel raises, the personnel raises are actually a result of federal law, looking at exempt employees. This is something that was done, because you have a lot of industries throughout the country that, you know, Walmart was sort of the most famous one for this. They pay people right up to a limit where they don't actually have to pay them overtime, or right up to a limit where they don't have to pay health insurance, and then they ask them to work overtime. So, people who are working 32 hours a year wouldn't qualify necessarily for, you know, any kind of, you know, other kind of benefits, or wouldn't qualify for overtime, actually do end up working overtime. And so, I'm getting to that point. Mr. Warren, just relax, calm down. Okay? This law was passed to make sure that people who are getting a fair wage are actually treated fairly. If you're going to be requiring people to earn a salary and work more than 40 hours, but only pay them for 40 hours, they should be getting a rate that basically allows them to live in this society and, you know, be able to, you know, make a living and provide for their families. It was a blanket order law that went across the nation. It does affect this county and other institutions throughout the country. In terms of impacting the nation using ARPA funds, I will put up as the prime example and stack it up against any county in this country, the co-responder program that Commissioner Marzeglia started that has social workers embedded with police departments all over Bucks County. That came out of the ARPA funds. That is something that benefits our police department. It started with one police department, you know, then Public Safety Director Haron was the, you know, first one to jump onto that. It's now up to how many police departments?
29.
29 out of the 39 police departments are now on it. In a matter of, what, three years, three and a half years, something like that. It's grown, four years. And that is a program that is keeping people safe, it's helping law enforcement deal with issues that, you know, quite frankly, are not, you know, something they should be dealing with, lets them go back on the street, and gets people the help they deserve and need. So, that is something in terms of leading the way for the nation, certainly I will put that up there as an example. That's all. There's no more comments or anything else?
Just the one comment about the Health Department. I think at the last Health Department meeting, you were there, and there was a suggestion by our attorney that your attorney speak or handle this. So, we're going to wait till after the meeting and speak with our director and our solicitor and see if we have any information for you. And that's it. Any other comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of the December 2nd, 2024, meeting to set salaries for elected officials, and the December 4th, 2024, regular meeting? And that would be Resolutions 1 through, sorry, I should have had that ready, 23F.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the regular agenda. Under emergency management, we are approving a resolution to establish the Bucks County Fire Service Advisory Board, and George Wilson is here to begin the discussion on this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. First, I want to introduce the people behind me. Fire Chief Adam Selsker from North Hampton Fire Department, Chief Scott Fleischer from Point Pleasant Fire Department, and Chief Tim Brewer for Upper Migfield Fire Department. We are here today to ask for the establishment of the Fire Service Advisory Board. This board was brought to the emergency management about a year, year and a half ago by several key fire service leaders. With the changing landscape of the fire service across Bucks County, we have seen a decline in the volunteer service and an increase in some career staffing throughout the county. With that happening throughout the county, the volunteers and the career staff decided that they should get together and have one unified voice to start tackling some of the key issues that are facing the fire service currently. Some of those issues are strategic planning, the training center, firefighter training, operational issues, and also working with local and county emergency management staff, as well as our emergency communication center on how we can help them operationally. The current makeup of the board is seven voting members. Those seven voting members include four volunteer fire chiefs, one from each fire district that is elected by their peers, and three career fire chief officers that are elected by the Career Chiefs Fire Association. Currently, our board of members are Chief Adam Selsker, he is from North Hampton Fire Department, who is our current chair, Chief Gary Laird, who is our co-chair from Pendel Fire Company, Chief Scott Fleischer from Point Pleasant, Chief Glenn Forsyth from Newtown Fire and Rescue, Battalion Chief Robert Spahnheimer from Ben Salem Fire Rescue, Chief Keith Butler from Milford Fire Company, and Chief Tim Brewer from Upper Migfield Fire Company. I'm going to turn the podium over to Chief Adam Selsker, who is the Chair of the Committee, to say a few words.
Thank you, George. Good morning, Commissioners. George pretty much said everything I was going to say, did a good job of sketching out what the committee looks like, but I just wanted to point out that we're proud to represent the entire fire service of Bucks County. I think this is the first time in my 44 years involved in the fire service that we actually have one single board that brings all the fire departments together to give direct feedback and engagement to the Commissioners of Bucks County. So, we thank you for that, both the career and volunteer service. It's a changing environment, as George said, are represented on this board, and we believe that it's critical to the ongoing success of the fire service in Bucks County to have a unified voice. And I think what's really great about this board is that we met with just about all the fire chiefs and fire departments in Bucks County, and wholeheartedly, everybody was on board to do this. So, we thank you for considering the formation of this board. We've already been meeting, even without today's meeting, and we have a lot of successes already with the Communication Center, with incident support around the county, and with the Training Center. Training is a critical component. The county is involved in the training of all the firefighters. Every firefighter in Bucks County goes through a Bucks County program somewhere or another. And the ongoing success of that program is going to be critical to our success in the future. So, thank you very much. We're proud to be here, and we're proud to support this resolution.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. First of all, thank you. I've been watching you and listening to the group meeting, and it's been wonderful. I'm looking forward to what you have to say. I wanted to add that last night, I had the privilege of being at the graduation of the fire training school. I guess there was 120 graduates, 23 fire companies from Bucks County were represented. So, it was nice to see that there are people still going through the school and that you'll be able to guide them in the future. Just a quick throw out here that I also want to say, thank you for a friend of mine whose house caught on fire last week. Her neighbor's house was destroyed, hers caught on fire, but the only reason she and her 90-year-old mother are alive is because firemen knocked on the door, and they knocked hard to get her awake, and fortunately, they're today. So, I know you represent so many people who've been saved and are thankful, so I wanted to say that, especially at this time of year. Any other comments or questions?
No, just thank you, obviously, for, you know, clearly, you gentlemen have been involved in the fire service for a long time. You got in for, you know, reasons. It was a passion of yours, you wanted to do something, you wanted to serve, and you're continuing that service through the creation of the Fire Service Advisory Board. I want to thank Mr. Wilson, and thank our entire staff at Emergency Management, especially also, she's moved upward and onward. Audrey Kenny, I know she was involved in this too, so she deserves some thanks. And for all the guys who are on this, the board members who are putting in extra time now on top of everything else that you already do, it means a lot, and we are looking forward to working with you to make sure we can do everything we need to do to support the fire service throughout this county.
Thank you, all of you, to your members and men and women of your membership for all you do every day on behalf of the residents here in Bucks County. We appreciate it very much.
On budget adjustments, the 2024 budget adjustments, number 24 and 25. Are there any questions? Anything that you want to add, Mr. Bascolla? Is there a motion to approve those budget adjustments? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, do we take a separate vote on the actual item number 24, the fire service?
We do need to do that. Maybe we should.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve number 24, Emergency Management, approve resolution to establish the Bucks County Fire Service Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that. I was thinking, I got into the presentation and forgot about the vote part. We just voted on the budget adjustments, correct? So, we're at C, the 2025 county budget, tax levy and appropriations. We can adopt the 2025 county budget as recommended by the Chief Financial Officer. Do you want to do this? Do you have any questions or comments before we do it? It's a roll call vote, so...
No, just want to thank, obviously, Mr. Bascolla, all the staff, all the department heads. This is a process that starts back over the summer. In terms of putting together everything that goes into a budget that's half a billion dollars and serves this, the fourth biggest county in Pennsylvania. Thank also to, thank you also to our COO, Margie McKebben, for all her guidance and, you know, and her, you know, giving people a shoulder to cry on this time of year, you know, especially Mr. Bascolla, I think, you know, plus Candy, lots of candy in her office for him when he gets a little stressed out. So, I'll make a motion to adopt the 2025 county budget as recommended by the Chief Financial Officer.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Oh, it's a roll call.
Wait, that's right, we got to do a roll call. Go ahead.
Commissioner Marzeglia?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner DeJor Alamo?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the 2025 county tax levies, mileage rate, and user fee schedules as recommended by the Chief Financial Officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Marzeglia?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner DeJor Alamo?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 appropriations to county agencies and authorities as recommended by the Chief Financial Officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Marzeglia?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner DeJor Alamo?
Aye.
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you. Another budget passes. There we go, no tax increase. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions for today?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board appointments. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Board appointments with the Bucks County Conservation District, this is a four-year term, both terms to end on 12/31, well, excuse me, one's a four-year term, from Mr. Dwight Ely, reappointment term ending 12/31/28. There is a Commissioner representative on this Conservation District. This is an unpaid position. I've been the representative for the past few years. So, a reappointment of myself, a term that will end 12/31/2025. County Board of Health, four-year term, Mr. Bill Roth, a reappointment term ending 1/8/2029. Mr. Phil Smith, a new appointment term ending 1/8/2029. Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission, three-year term, all reappointments, all terms ending on December 1st, 2027. Mr. Joe Barterilla, Ms. Megan Cohen, Mr. Fred Horan, Ms. Kay McBride. I'll make a motion for those eight appointments and reappointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief Operating Officers report. Ms. McKebben?
Thank you, Commissioner. I too would echo Commissioner Harvey's comments regarding the budget. Thank you to department heads, rows, courts, and to Dave for putting together a budget that was presented to you all and passed today. So, thank you, Commissioners, for that. We have a working operating budget that we can certainly fulfill many of the services that Bucks County residents and business owners need. Secondly, I would ask if I could invite Dave Damsker to discuss and share with us some exciting news about the nursing home winning an award.
Oh, thank you, Margie. I appreciate it. I just wanted to let everybody know, for 2025, U.S. News and World Report has made the Chaminie Manor one of the top nursing homes in the United States. We're very thrilled to get that designation. It's based on patient care, safety, quality, and I can tell you, as one of the three or four largest nursing homes in Pennsylvania, 360 residents, that's a difficult thing to do. We're open, I just want to say, you know, really to the staff and the administration over there... over there, we're open 24/7, 365, and the regulations continue to get more and more onerous every year, and we still, we have amazing staff that continue to work very hard, and they make it a great place for our residents to be. And I just wanted to congratulate them, and this is our second year in a row that we've received this designation, so thank you.
Yes. Congratulations to the nursing home, but thank you, Dave, for your, for your guidance and your leadership over the nursing home. It is, it's a, it's a wonderful place, and we're very fortunate to have this in Bucks County. And then lastly, I just want to wish everybody happy holidays, because this is our last meeting before the, before next year, so thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Solicitors' report?
Just one item to report. The board held its standing executive session yesterday, December 18th, with staff and legal counsel present to discuss personnel matters pending a prospective litigation related to securities and right to know matters and to receive confidential legal advice. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move to Commissioners' comments. I did forget to add one thing in terms of the haircuts, which are of zero cost to the county. Medicaid requires that everybody on Medicaid be offered a haircut once a month, and anyone not on Medicaid pays for it themselves. So thank you. Commissioner DeJordalomo?
Just a couple quick comments. I want to also congratulate Dr. Damsker and all the staff over there at the nursing home. I was over there for Veterans Day event when we honored the veterans, and again, as I said that day when I went over there, I, I think our nursing home here in Bucks County, the Chaminade Manor, is the number one nursing home in Pennsylvania. I mean, I know you mentioned it might be one of the top two or three, but I think, I think we're number one here in Bucks County. And I just want to thank you and the staff over there at the nursing home. As far as the budget goes, I mean, really happy and quite frankly, proud that we're not raising taxes this year, and as Commissioner Harvey said, I want to thank Dave Bascolla for the, for the hard work you and the staff in your office have done in putting this together. And also want to thank our COO, Margie, as well, because I know she was heavily involved as far as myself and the other Commissioners were, making sure we were informed about what was going on, and we had input into what was going on, and I want to thank you as well, Margie, for, for being there. Thank you. And just finally, a week before Christmas, so I want to wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas to you and your families, and as far as New Year's go, New Year's is coming up, and we're not going to be meeting before New Year's, so happy and healthy New Year to you and your family as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. So being the, the history kid, not a kid anymore, but you have been for a long time, Monday marked the 80th anniversary of what's known as the Battle of the Bulge, the largest battle, to this day, the largest battle the United States Army has ever fought, a battle that lasted about a month, that cost the lives of about 16,000 Americans, and in many ways is seen as, you know, the, the preeminent battle the United States Army in its, in its history, through everything, through Gettysburg, through World War I, the Revolution. What most people don't realize is that the attack by the German forces in Belgium and Luxembourg hit an area of the American lines that was largely made up of trainees and soldiers who were basically moved to that area for rest and recuperation, because they had been through some difficult times the months before. So when a massive force of, of German armor and men ran through that section, they hit a lot of 18- and 19-year-old kids who had never seen combat before, and they saw a lot of other soldiers who were exhausted. And yet the resistance they put up goes down in history, not just American, as one of the strongest defenses ever, ever seen against overwhelming odds, against horrible weather, against everything. The little town of Bastogne in Belgium has sort of, so always becomes sort of the centerpiece of the fight, because it was surrounded and occupied only by members of the 101st Airborne Division who were used to being surrounded. And they had a commander who, when presented with the opportunity to surrender by the Germans, replied with a simple term, which was "nuts." And the Germans didn't understand what "nuts" meant, and asked if it was a positive or negative, and were told it was definitely negative, in terms of its, what the message was. I just talk about this, not just to mark this, this, you know, kind of the, the history here, and just to, you know, go back to my days as a teacher, but because increasingly, as we get 80 years away from that war, you know, we lose, as we know, every day, many, many members of that generation, which has gone down rightfully called the Greatest Generation. It was a generation not just great because they won World War II, made it through the Great Depression before that as kids, and then helped build an incredibly powerful America in the 1950s and 60s, but because they did all this selflessly, you know, they, they didn't do it for glory, they did it for the guy next to them, they did it for this country. And as we hear talk about, you know, our own history and, and what it means to be a great country, my worry is that as we lose more and more of those people who were the selfless generation, the Greatest Generation, it becomes harder and harder for us to remember what really is important and what the true ingredient is to making a country great, and it is caring about each other and treating each other the way they should be treated. You know, it's unfortunate that nowadays, you know, we choose to target and attack other Americans instead of trying to figure out how we can help make things better. And so for, I know we had veterans of the Battle of the Bulge here in this county, I don't know how many are still remaining, I had a chance to meet, you know, a few of them, you know, over the course of my, my time and career as a teacher, bringing veterans into schools, but certainly it's something to, you know, it gets lost this time of year, and I don't know how much news coverage there was of it, probably not a lot, but, you know, it's certainly something to consider. I would thank again all our staff, not just for the budget, but for, you know, all the work they put in this year, for all department heads, for all officers, for the service you provide, the members of this, the people of this county. Thank you. Wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Hanukkah begins, I think, Christmas Eve, you know, happens once in a while where there's an overlap, so Happy Hanukkah to those members of our community and our staff and, and who are Jewish, and wish everybody a very happy, safe New Year.
Thank you, indeed. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.